There we go. Thank you. Um, okay. So the our our goal this evening is to describe the regional housing plan as well as the municipal annex that Essex is going to be working on. What affordable housing plans are and what affordable housing means particularly in Essex. Then we're going to go through some local analysis of our our current policies in Essex, available land, our demographics, our housing trends, and then we're going to combine that to a housing needs assessment. And then we're going to do a little bit of live polling to sort of begin a little bit of a conversation about what the town might be able to do in in terms of its local goals and approaches. So what you as participants will be responsible for tonight is to learn, to listen and learn why and talk about why affordable housing is important to Essex. Ask questions you may have. We are going to go through a number of slides relatively quickly. This this obviously is being recorded. And we will have the PowerPoint available on the Riverco website and through the town of Essex. So if people have, I want to, you know, sort of take a closer look at some of the information afterwards. You are certainly able to do that. And Megan just posted in the chat the link for the regional housing plan and that that chat feature is also what you should use if you have questions as we go through the presentation. And then if you are on a cell phone have that's ready, or if you are on a computer browser, be ready to open up another window because we're going to be doing some live polling, again, talking about a couple of potential policy directions. Okay. Jumping in, the regional housing plan is a project undertaken by Rivercog as a follow up to their regional plan of conservation and development, which was completed last year. The regional housing plan itself is has basically two major components. The first is the regional housing analysis. Because Middlesex County and the Rivercog area is is in many ways a fairly cohesive employment area, fairly cohesive housing area. The 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 trends seen in a lot of our communities are very similar. We tend to be aging. It tends to be, you know, larger, single family. Detached residences. We tend to be an ownership occupied region and the employment trends are are similar for most of the region. But then each individual town that's participating in the the annex process is going to come out of it with the Affordable Housing Plan that is mandated by the state to be produced every five years. And we'll talk about that as well. The regional housing plan was passed in twenty seventeen. The the requirement by the state was passed in twenty seventeen, basically saying every five years, every community in the state, big or small, rich or poor, needed to adopt an affordable housing plan. And again, so this was twenty seventeen, the first regional plan, or I'm sorry, the first municipal set of plans are due in June twenty twenty two, so five years after it passed. However, Essex was ahead of the game and we actually approved our first plan in March twenty nineteen. I say we, I I there are some folks on the call I don't know who may not know me. I am, I have been a planning consultant to the town of Essex since about two thousand and seven. So I think we're going into year fifteen of my working with the town. So I was working with the Planning Commission at the time when we developed the first Affordable Housing Plan in Essex. So we will be basically updating that plan to to give us a couple more years. So we don't have to update it next year. Or I'm sorry, twenty twenty four. But because of the state's basically broad allowances for what a for a local affordable housing plan ought to be or what to contain, it's a very locally led process. And so this plan, this annex as part of the regional plan is really an opportunity to present Essex's priorities, Essex's values as relate to development of housing in Essex specifically. Okay, so when we talk about affordable housing, we follow the state definition. The state has a state statute eight dash thirty G, which is similar, both sounding and in proximity to eight dash thirty J, which is the Affordable Housing Plan mandate. But eight dash thirty G defines affordable housing, which is restricted due to a deed restriction or subsidy or income limit to households that are making less than eighty percent of the state or area median income, the AMI, and would require those residents to spend not more than thirty percent of their income on that housing. And anyone spending more than thirty percent of their housing is considered housing constrained. So in Essex, that that number, what the eighty percent of the area median income is basically for a family of four, it's just under seventy one thousand dollars a year. Or individuals making just under sixty thousand dollars a year would be at that eighty percent AMI threshold. And so below that level, you are talking about people that would be eligible for affordable housing opportunities if they were were available. And then if you break that further down, because as I said, the if you are in an eighty percent AMI situation or lower, you should not be spending more than thirty percent of your income on housing. And so that thirty percent basically equates to about twelve hundred bucks a month for a a single, a a single person household or about seventeen hundred bucks a month for a family of four. So that those are what the numbers mean when we talk about affordable. It's basically that level and below. So there was a community survey that was done as part of the overall regional housing plan that was done in the fall of last year. About just under seventy people participated in Essex. This was a lot of the questions were similar to on the survey that was conducted as part of the Affordable Housing Plan back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. And we found the results to be fairly similar. So between those two surveys, asking similar questions, we've got a pretty good sample size of of what people's sense of affordable housing was in in Essex. The respondents were primarily older and folks who had been in the town for a long time. The majority have been in Essex for more than twenty years. A solid third were over sixty five. It was actually relatively evenly divided about people who are empty nesters, couples with children and living alone. It was basically, you know, a fifth, a fifth, a fifth. And the majority of respondents and the majority of folks in Essex, as you'll see in in a bit, are in in one and two person households, relatively small household sizes in Essex. Asking us some more questions about about people's experience is people generally see themselves in a relatively stable situation, relatively same size household over the next five years. However, the majority indicated that are I'm sorry, a majority said that they were planning to be in their their current situation for the next five years, but a solid thirty eight percent were looking to downsize. And this is, you know, because we have, we have an aging population in in Essex. A majority knew people who struggled with housing costs and could benefit from increased affordable housing. There was a great deal of awareness of affordable housing in Essex in general. And I think a lot of that has has become because of several relatively high profile multifamily and affordable projects that have happened over the last couple of years, both Essex Place and Essex Station and then the Spencer's Corner Project. So I think there's a lot of visibility and a lot of awareness of affordable housing in Essex over the last couple of years. When we ask people specifically about their opinions about affordable housing, a very strong majority, over eighty percent, said that affordable housing was important to Essex's longevity. A majority, a great majority, over sixty percent said there are not enough housing housing options for residents' current need. And a slightly smaller majority said that there these housing options were not enough for future need also. So there is, I think, a strong awareness of the limitations of Essex's current housing stock to meet either current or future needs. And we asked people if there was not enough enough or or more than enough housing for different types of demographic groups. And as you see, when you looked at housing for young adults, almost everybody said there's not nearly enough housing in Essex for young adults. And we had similar numbers for low income households, people living alone, local workers, renters. So there was, I think, people realize the the type of housing stock that we see in Essex and we'll we'll get into the the housing demographics in it in a second. But there is an awareness that there's simply not enough choices. I'm sorry, Liz, you can keep going. Thanks. And so again, a great majority, over sixty nine percent, said that housing diversity would be positive. And the ways in which people believed it would be positive is again, increased diversity of residents, socioeconomic and age and race, allowing younger people particularly to stay in town, increase downsizing options for seniors and then improve the overall community. So I do think that the survey was was reinforcing to to those of us who help make policy in Essex to to kind of look at increasing options. So looking at what Essex currently does to encourage or discourage housing options. There are a number of single family residential districts. Essex is obviously very heavily single family residential. Most of these districts allow accessory apartments, basically single family. You can have accessory apartments via site plan, although we have a public hearing next month to talk about as of right accessory apartments. But multifamily housing of anything more than four units is basically not allowable under normal circumstances in Essex. There is one district, the the residents, the rural residents multifamily district, which is kind of a remote portion of town that's fairly built out and fairly unfriendly to development from an environmental standpoint. You can only do four family dwelling units there. And it's sort of a complicated process, but other than something like Essex Station or Essex Place, which used the eight thirty G statute, multifamily housing is generally not allowed in Essex. It's a difficult thing to do. And part of the reason that it's a difficult thing to do, regulations aside, is that Essex is constrained in terms of its public infrastructure. We we don't have sewer lines, obviously. And so any kind of density is dependent on the soil conditions. And there are a number of environmentally sensitive areas, watercourses, wetlands, floodplain, the Connecticut River itself. And then, you know, some of the develop, otherwise developable property has been preserved and by the very active and very successful Essex Land Trust, who, you know, does a great deal of service to keep the town green and to preserve open spaces. But every time you preserve an open space, you're also taking land off the off the books for potential development. So there's there's a balance and there's a challenge there. The Plan of Conservation and Development is a policy document that was passed back in twenty fifteen. So we're we're, and that's a ten year document. So we're we're going to be heading into another cycle of updating the Plan of Conservation and Development in the next year or two. And the goal of that is to basically set broad policies to to encourage different types of actions for the town and so sort of set priorities for the community. And in that plan, the the town does seek to expand a variety of housing options throughout Essex, including affordable housing, that not only in traditional development, but also mixed use and multifamily. And the town has actually made some progress in terms of making strides in affordable housing where we have been working for quite a while on expanding accessory apartment options, which again, as I said, we're we're going to have a public hearing in April about. We're looking at zoning changes to revise multifamily zoning, incentive housing zones, and looking at infrastructure improvements, you know, like saying public water, natural gas and things like that, that would make it easier to develop at higher densities. But it's a work in progress. Okay, so now looking at a little bit of some of the demographic situations. I would note that a lot of this data you'll see is from the American Community Survey, which is a five year statistical sample. That's basically twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen. The there was a census, obviously in twenty twenty, and we know that there's had, there was some, you know, data issues with it. Not all of the full data sets are available. We really only have raw population numbers. And so most of the data that we've got is again from the American Community Survey. It's the the best available and we're using DOH Department of Housing Guidance as well. This particular table is based on both the census and the Connecticut Data Center data projection. So the blue lines are census numbers where you see, you know, Essex has grown steadily over the last sixty years, from about four thousand in nineteen sixty to just so just under seven thousand in twenty twenty. However, the Connecticut State Data Center believes that Essex's population may have peaked at least for a while. And and because of aging, because of a lack of in migration, Essex is likely to see a steady decline of population over the next twenty years. And I believe this is already seen in the school districts where we we've got shrinking class sizes and things like that. And so over the next twenty years, it is likely, although this is not, you know, locked in and not faded to happen, that Essex is going to have a relatively long, slow decline of population for the next, for the foreseeable future. Some of the, some of that change we've seen, we've lost senior population, I think primarily to retirement and other and attenuation. The town has gained. You know, you're sort of stable adults, so basically thirty five to fifty, thirty five to fifty five. Those folks have settled in town, but we have lost particularly young people. If you if you look at the 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 numbers of fifteen to twenty five, basically, those two chunks are huge losses. And now that's the young people are are going off to college and basically not coming back, at least for a while. And meanwhile, the percentage of seniors in Essex continues to grow. So if you look at the both the twenty twenty, two thousand and twenty ten census, the population was relatively steadily steady and the population of seniors is relatively steady, about fifth, about a fifth of the population. But over the last ten years, that has jumped up. And so now fully a third of the Essex population is seniors. In terms of household size and distribution, Essex sort of mirrors Connecticut or Middlesex County generally, where about half of the households are married couples. And and a smaller percentage are other family. In Essex, a slightly higher percentage of people are living alone. But it's it's again, it's about a third, which is reflective of Middlesex County generally. And in terms of household size distribution, whereas you do have a majority of people who are married, the, you know, that's that's basically two person households. You don't have big families in Essex, generally speaking. And a pretty whopping three quarters of the Essex population are in one and two person households, which is, which is kind of an outlier, even in Middlesex County, which is, which tends to be aging. This is the highest percentage of one and two person households that I've seen in in a number of the analysis and presentations that we've done. So a couple of those takeaways again is population has been growing steadily, but I think we may have reached a plateau and maybe declining. We are, you're aging, losing the younger people, particularly younger adults. And and we have very small household sizes in Essex. And now we'll take a look at some of the housing conditions, which is an inch, which would be an interesting contrast to house sizes as opposed to household sizes. In Essex, again, not surprising to anyone who's who's lived here. It's largely owner occupied. Eighty percent of the town is basically owner occupied, which is a little bit higher than Middlesex County generally, which is about three quarters owner occupied. The remainder is renter occupied. In terms of housing units, Essex is, again, it's a, it's a suburban community where it's basically three quarters of the town is single family detached. And we have, you know, a few multifamily. And I think, again, recently, we've added some, you know, Essex, Essex Station, Essex. Essex Meadows is certainly multifamily. And then, and then the Spencer's Corner Project has added to that to that stock, but Essex remains strongly, strongly single family residential. In terms of bedroom sizes, Middlesex County and Essex are are pretty much the same is that, you know, a smaller number of one and two bedrooms, basically about a third of one and two bedrooms. Big chunks of the town, you know, six and ten are three, four or five bedroom houses, which are substantially sized. And then when you take a look at our one and two bedroom or what our one and two person household numbers, you see a sort of a growing disconnect between the size of our households and the size of our houses in Essex. In terms of home value, we'll talk about prices in a little bit, but price trends. But as of the 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 twenty nineteen American Community Survey, basically half of the houses in towns are between two and four hundred thousand. And then the the remainder tends to skew a little bit higher. There's very few houses in Essex for under two hundred thousand dollars. And I think most of those are probably condos. In terms of rent, and again, the the numbers are relatively small. We saw, you know, less, only about twenty percent of Essex is a renter situation. So those numbers, those raw numbers are relatively small. And so the less than, less than a thousand dollars rent, I think, is probably pretty strongly skewed, frankly, to the senior housing at Essex, Essex Court and Essex Place, as well as some of the, some of the deed restricted units and Spencer's Corner and and the Essex Station. But then there are some more market units that that tend to be between fifteen and two thousand dollars. In terms of housing permit numbers, we see basically, you know, the the first thing that jumps out is that obviously back in, you know, the starting with the crash of twenty oh eight, twenty oh nine, things really got slow for a decade. Things really picked up. Basically, twenty twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, those were big, big peaks. I believe twenty seventeen is probably there was, there was the, the I'm not going to remember the name. It's, it's the the condos down off of Booken Road, Essex Glen. There were a number of units built then about that time. And that was also the 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 time that we were adding Essex Place and Essex Station. So there was, there was a lot of housing development, particularly in the multifamily. And then, and then it's been relatively quiet since then. In terms of home sales, home turnover, it's remained relatively steady. Obviously, when home values dropped back in in twenty oh eight, twenty oh nine, there wasn't quite a lot of turnover, but over the last, you know, eight, ten years, things have picked up and we've been consistently over a hundred houses turning over every year, relatively stable. And how's home prices have have more than recovered from that, from that crash of of twenty oh eight, twenty oh nine? And we are now at nearly an all time peak from back just before the bubble burst, where we were just under four, five hundred thousand. And we're back over there. We're we're at four nine, four eighty nine in two thousand and five, we're up to four eighty eight in twenty twenty. So it's housing prices have been on an upward trend and and are at, you know, sort of the peak that it's been in quite some time. And condos have have really jumped up. And I think a lot of that actually has to do with the addition over the last couple of years of the Essex Glen properties. So looking at again, overall, overall marketing, market trends, again, we're largely single family detached. Downsizers are kind of in a stuck situation. We don't have a lot of one and two bedroom units, but we do have a lot of one and two bedroom households. And so the 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 home values are, you know, are are continuing to rise. But what that does is it tends to crowd out those looking for relatively smaller households. And and some of that, some of those local peaks, some of those things we've seen over the last couple of years, it's not clear yet if those are sort of COVID peaks, you know, when when people are looking for properties outside of cities and a place like Essex has gotten a little bit of a, a little bit of a price bump. You know, we'll see what happens over the next couple of years. Okay, so now we've we've looked at our our demographics, we've looked at our housing. Now let's see what we can, we can talk about in terms of affordability. Again, when we talk about affordability, we're looking at people making eighty percent or less of the area median income. And so this, this group is further broken down into low income, which is between fifty and eighty percent of the area median, very low income, which is thirty to fifty percent, and very low income, actually, I'm sorry, extremely low income, which people making less than thirty percent of the area median income. And looking just based on the demographic numbers that we have for for income of people in the American Community Survey and the HUD Community Surveys, there are over a thousand solid households in Essex, which is a more than a third of the total, meet that definition, who are at eighty percent or less of the area median income, including a very high number of extremely low income households. That's thirty, three hundred and fifty extremely low income households in Essex. And so if if this would be the, based on, based on our area median, these would be the maximum rents that would be able to be afforded in Essex. So at the low income level, it's basically a single person would be able to afford twelve hundred bucks a month without be being income constrained or a rent, a housing constraint. That number drops to eight sixty at a very low income and about five hundred a month for an individual. And again, those numbers that 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 you know, between five and twelve hundred dollars, that's, that's the all in number. So if you're a renter, which is what this slide is doing, this includes, you know, your, your heat, your hot water utilities. And if it's, if you are a home buyer or a mortgage holder, that includes property taxes, utilities, homeowners association fees, if it's a condo and maintenance costs. So those are all in costs. And and if you're spending more than that thirty percent or more than these, these income numbers or more these, these, these housing numbers you're seeing, that this is an example of people that would have to forego other necessities, things like food and transportation and medicine and education, because housing costs very frequently come first. And so for the, for those folks who are in homeowner situations, the low income is again, that's, that's between two hundred and fourteen to two ninety for a family or at a low income level, individual and family, and that extremely low income, you're somewhere between eighty seven thousand, a hundred and twenty five thousand. And if you look around, and particularly when we looked at our our home and condo values, it really aren't opportunities for people to buy a house or a condo for eighty seven to a hundred and twenty five thousand. There just aren't those those opportunities. So when we looked at cost burden, again, these are people that are spending, that are currently spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing of the of the renters, over half, almost sixty percent are in that cost burden situation. And then for homeowners, over seventy percent are are cost burden. And these are primarily, I think, can be understood as, and you can, Liz, you can flip to the next slide. Most of the folks, I think, that are in that home ownership situation that are cost burden are primarily retirees, I would say, people on fixed incomes who are in houses that they really can no longer afford, but don't necessarily have the options to move out of in Essex and remain in Essex. So the the populations of those cost burdens, actually, the the where it shows is that sixty five and older, about twenty five percent of those households are incomes constrained, but it's also the younger folks, younger adults, so under thirty five and thirty five to sixty four. Solid third of the homeowners are in income burden, or I'm sorry, cost burden situations. And that situation gets a little bit worse when you look at renters. So renters are basically four in ten renters are in a, in a position where they're forced to, if they choose to live in Essex or pay more than thirty percent of their income on housing. And and a solid quarter of our neighbors, other householders, other, other owners are paying more than thirty percent and are therefore less likely to be able to afford as many of the other necessities as they are. So given, given all of that, where is Essex right now in terms of its trackable affordable housing? Again, to meet that statutory definition of affordable housing, these are income limited or deed restricted to be affordable to that eighty percent or less of the area median income. Where we are in Essex right now is out of the thirty two hundred housing units total, just over a hundred, one hundred and nine are listed as affordable. The majority of those are government assisted, and that basically means a housing authority that's basically Essex Place and Essex Station right off of Main Street in Centerbrook. Deed restricted units make up a chunk, and those are properties that were created through basically eight thirty G. And so those are, those would include the Essex Station. There are some, there are sixteen affordable units at Essex Station as well as eighteen, I think eighteen, at Spencer's Corner that are that are deed restricted. And then there are the other are single family ownership situation where the homeowner got mortgage assistance or or down payment assistance by enrolling in a USDA or CHFA mortgage assistance program. And so those are considered affordable as well. So Essex is at three point three percent, which is actually, you know, it's, it's, it's less than the the state's threshold of ten percent to be eligible for the Affordable Housing Appeals Act. However, you know, in in the last five years or so, since some of this affordable housing activity got going, Essex was under two percent. So just the last five years, we've made, you know, actually significant progress. We we've basically doubled our our affordable housing stock. But despite that progress, despite those gains, there is still a gap. And so we ran a a housing gap analysis. And basically, we've taken the the statistical numbers for numbers of low income households, the available housing supply and the cost of that housing, both home values and rent. And then we basically compare the housing demand for low income housing to housing supply. And then we basically compare the housing demand for low income housing to housing supply. Okay, so this is the gap analysis for a family of four. And so basically because Essex is such a significant owner occupied community. And with, with relatively fewer rental units, the demand for owner occupied units and the gap is significantly larger. So we have a gap of over three hundred and thirty. Or about three hundred, I should say. Affordable units that would be needed by the current housing stock, over three hundred households are in need of housing affordability that is not there. And the renter occupied tells a slightly better story, and that's largely because of some of the, the recent affordable housing multifamily that's been developed. Looking at individuals, the gap gets, gets even worse. There are lower income individuals at the eighty percent and lower of the area median income. We are over eight hundred, almost eight hundred and fifty gap for, for individual units, I'm sorry, for individual householders. And the renter occupied units are in about, about a hundred and fifty gap. So some takeaways, again, of, out of, you know, just over three thousand total households in Essex, a full third of them, over a thousand are classified as low income and could be eligible. But there aren't simply the, the opportunities. There is a significant gap in between the people that need lower, lower cost housing in Essex and those lower cost housing opportunities. And there's, there's, you know, a disproportionate burden on, on seniors, sort of one and two person households on fixed incomes, renters particularly, and then young families and single, single person households. So those are the numbers. Then the question is, well, what can Essex do about it? What can we put in place in terms of policy or approach that might help the situation? So what we've, we're doing is some live polling and I'll shut up for a second and let Liz run us through this.
Thanks, John. So if you have your other tab open on your computer or you're opening your browser on your smartphone, please go to poll EV dot com slash SLR twenty twenty one. And you'll see our test question. Well, actually, this isn't a test question, but we want to know if you've been to a workshop for the regional housing plan. So we had a workshop in October, we had one in January, and we want to see if you've been there. Or if you're new to the process. So again, that's poll EV dot com slash SLR twenty twenty one. And if one of my colleagues wouldn't mind dropping that in the chat for people to copy paste, that'd be great. Excellent. At least one, at least one person got in there. All right, there we go. If you're having any issues, please let me know, either ask in the chat or use the raise hand function, and I will do my best to help you out. And while we're waiting for people to log on, are there any questions in the chat? Unfortunately, I can't multitask.
We do have one question. Well, we have one comment and one question. The comment is the thirty percent rule is not realistic. I don't know if you want to address where that came from.
Sure. Well, yeah, I'll give John a break. The thirty percent is the rule of thumb from HUD that the federal authority on housing. We, we realize that it, it's an imperfect figure. So for folks who have a pretty high income or for those who have assets that aren't considered income more or less, but are used to pay for housing, they would, they wouldn't necessarily show up in that thirty, in that cost burden figure. They, they would be included even though they have assets that are contributing to housing. So it's, we're, we're doing the best we can with, within these guidelines, and that's why we've provided so many different data sources so we can make a complete picture with as best we can. All right. So we, we're getting a couple more results, but I know there are more people on this call than six. So let's just let me know.
They'll give you the question while we wait.
Yeah, let's do it.
Do the owners of eight thirty G properties get a break on property tax because they offer a percentage of units as affordable housing? So I'm assuming this applies to rental property owners.
And I'll jump in. The, the, the answer is no. The, the, the benefit of using eight thirty G and I'll use Essex Station as an example, which, you know, I'm sure everyone's familiar with. It's, it's the three apartment buildings right next to the Essex Steam Train. Those are, that's fifty two units across those three buildings. And thirty percent of them, sixteen are deeded as affordable. The other seventy percent are unrestricted in terms of rent. And so the, the, the benefit to the developer is, is not in the tax break, but it's in basically being able to build that thing in the first place. Because the zoning, as we talked about in most of Essex, and particularly right in, in the, in the area right next to the steam train, multifamily is not otherwise allowed. You, if you, if you used a straight market rate development, you would not be able to build that Essex under current rules. So the, the benefit that the developer gets is that they get to build, you know, thirty, seventy percent of the market rate units. What, what is the math on that? Thirty six? Thirty six market rate apartment units. In, in an area that would not otherwise be allowed. So there is no additional, there is no additional tax benefit that the town or the state provides at this point.
All right. So you only have seven folks who've answered their answer, but that's okay. We'll keep moving. But it looks like we're pretty evenly split. So welcome to the folks who are just joining us and welcome back for the folks who have stuck with us since the beginning. Let's, oh, there, it was out of order. I'll just skip that. So we want to know who's on the call tonight. So if you can identify your age. Just so we can see, see what the demographics are.
I think we should be getting about fifteen responses if we subtract us.
So if we get, if we get a lot of people under forty, Liz, you can start making more TikTok references.
There we go. Yeah, that's, that's how I know how to, how to connect with my audience. All right. Well, we've broken ten. We're in double digits. Proud of you.
Maybe we should go back to the ice cream question. I want to see if it lines up with anything else that we get in the data.
Yeah, if we have time tonight, I'll, I'll switch back to that one. All right. Okay, so we've got a thirty seventy split of under sixty and over sixty. So let's keep going.
I will, I will issue, issue my, my apologies to those folks over sixty that are TikTok fans. That's on me.
All right. So what's your household currently composed of? So are you in that one or two person household that we saw on the census? Are you in a larger household? Do you have kids at home? Okay, so yeah, we're, we're kind of seeing what we saw in the census reflected in the group tonight. Okay, moving on. What best describes your current home? Are you, do you own a single family home? Do you own multifamily? Are you renting? What kind of rental do you have? All right. Looks like everybody who's answering is owns a single family. Again, pretty reflective of what we saw in the census and what we saw on our regional survey. Oh, there we go. Own and live in a multifamily home. Awesome. Well, I'm glad we're getting representation from other housing types as well. That's great. All right, let's keep it moving.
John. So having, having gone through some of the basic questions, so we get familiar with the, with the poll EV interface, we wanted to run a couple of ideas of the flagpole and get a sense of what people think in terms of action steps or policies that town could undertake to increase its stock of affordable units. So Essex was the first town in the region to, to have approved an affordable housing plan. And some of the higher in that plan of twenty nineteen, some of the higher priority implementation items were to issue preliminary approval to certain target sites to encourage development to basically say, we've identified these areas in town that would be good for multifamily and good for affordable housing. And we'll sort of pre-approve those to basically encourage their development. The second was to prioritize creation of units with accessibility for senior and elderly residents and those with mobility concerns. To encourage development of at least three deed restricted affordable housing projects. And since the adoption in twenty nineteen, at least one, Spencer's Corner has been adopted. But to continue that, and then to prioritize the continued use of all existing affordable housing. Those were four of the high priority implementation items from the last plan. And so the question is, you know, now that we're three or four years down the road from that plan, which of these are still relevant or should we still focus on?
Okay, so for, sorry. So for this question, we're going to, it's going to be a little bit different. So instead of doing a multiple choice, you're going to click and drag your highest priority to the top of the list and order them. So the top is the most important and the bottom is the least important to you. If you're on a cell phone, you're going to want to click and hold until little arrows appear next to each item, and then you can click those arrows to move them up and down. There we go. All right, we got our first response. This one takes a little longer. So if there are any other questions on this that we can answer in the meantime.
And, and this is again, these are by no means the, the only priorities. There were other priorities of the, of the twenty nineteen plan, and there will be other priorities and goals of this twenty twenty two plan. But we, you know, we just wanted to, to sort of revisit the question of how are we doing over the last couple of years? Sure. And so someone asked a question about what does deed restricted mean? And so this is basically when you create the housing units, and this is particularly for rental units, is that you are verifying that you will not rent the unit in question to someone who makes, basically makes too much money, who is wealthier than, than eighty percent of that area median income. And so what that requires is basically an annual income verification of the renter. Where you basically verify that you are still eligible to get this, get this essentially rent break. And, and an annual report has to be filed by the, by the landlord or the property manager. Which is something, which is a standard thing for, you know, housing authority properties. And, and it's now something that also, if you're a private developer that, that owns an affordable development, like the owner of Essex Station or the, the owners of Spencer's Corner, which is the whole partnership, they have to to maintain that restriction. And, and as Carrie Duquesse asks, is there a time limit on the deed restriction? It is basically a forty year restriction for the eight thirty Gs. And so, so those units at Spencer's Corner, those units at Essex Station will be available to those who make eighty percent or less of the area median income for forty years. And there's another, can you send around? Sure, we can, we can, we can certainly do that. And I'll, we'll, we'll basically have, have our email contacts at the end, and we would encourage, we'd encourage people to, to reach out to us.
All right. It looks like our answers are kind of plateauing. So in first place, right now, we have the development of at least three deed restricted projects. Prioritizing the continued use of all existing affordable housing units. Second, issue a preliminary approval to for certain sites. Third, and then prioritize the creation of units with accessibility is fourth. So.
Okay, so the second, or the, the, one of the policy concepts going forward is because housing itself is it kind of cuts across a number of other areas where folks in planning and zoning, the Board of Selectment, Economic Development, the Housing Authority, Board of Education, all have, have some concerns and, and some relatedness to housing. However, in Essex, there is no single entity that's sort of responsible for thinking about housing, thinking about creation of more housing opportunities in town. The Housing Authority tends to basically at this point manage the stock that they've got and, and, you know, over the last couple of years, they did expand to Essex Place. I'm sorry, yeah, Essex Place. But there isn't really an entity that looks at providing wider housing opportunities from a policy standpoint in Essex. And so the idea that we are pitching is basically, would it be worthwhile to have either an Essex focused housing committee or have Essex participate in a regional housing committee? Where, you know, we could work with boards and commissions, we could work with other towns to look at opportunities to change policy, to make more opportunities for, for housing. So would the creation of that sort of local or regional housing board have some appeal?
So we're back to our multiple choice, and we have options for either the regional or the local housing committee. All right. Interesting, interesting split. Would any of the folks who answered local or regional want to share why they chose one approach over the other? Or any of the folks who said that they needed more information, they have a specific question they want to ask now, we're happy to answer them. So again, you can either type it in the chat or use the raise hand function. And we'll do our best to get to everybody.
We do have a couple of additional questions that came up in the chat. So I don't know if you would prefer to hold off till we're through or start going through them now. They date back a bit.
Okay, then, then, yeah, we'll go, we'll address them when you. All right. Well, hearing none, let's keep going.
Okay, so the second concept is sort of gets back to that multifamily question. And whereas there have been a couple of multifamily developments, those have been done through the eight thirty G appeal period, appeal process. But, but just a basic following of the regulations, what the regulations say is that generally speaking of multifamily housing is not allowed in Essex. And it's, it's really only allowed in rural multifamily zoning district, which is geographically limited and, and development constrained. So, so in all, for all intents and purposes, multifamily sort of market rate, standard zoning multifamily is not something that's going to be happening that much. So one idea to encourage that or to expand housing opportunities would be to change the regulations that would allow multifamily development in different zoning districts, certainly at lower densities in your more rural residential areas away from the villages, but then higher densities in village residential areas, which are close to the villages, close to the main streets with suitable soils and make it easier to do maybe via site plan rather than an extended special permit process with public hearings. And particularly for redevelopment of existing buildings, there are a number of larger buildings in town that could be suitable for, you know, two, three, four, five, six apartment units or condo units inside existing buildings. And the idea would be, we would incentivize that by making them not, not only allowable, but also easier to do. And so is that sort of loosening of regulations to make multifamily a little bit easier and a little bit more widespread? Would that be something you'd support?
All right. So again, I'd open it up for the folks who need more information or who selected another option. If you have a comment or a question about the specific strategy, we'd be happy to hear those now. All right. Well, yeah, we've got a lot of folks who probably need more info and I, that, that tracks considering that. that that tracks considering that you have to pick what zone they're gonna be in, what that density that's gonna look like. So all those steps come later. But yeah, right, let's keep going.
Okay, so the third concept we're talking about would rely on a bit of enabling legislation that was passed several years back. So in the general statute, section eight dash two I is called the inclusionary zoning allowance. Which basically, for for those familiar with sort of a subdivision process, when you develop a piece of land for subdivision, very often the town can require setting aside open space as part of that subdivision for, you know, parks or 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 open areas or natural, natural areas. And if you do not set aside that open space, then often you'd pay a fee, but it is is a requirement with every development. And so the state has also allowed this sort of requirement or fee in lieu to be imposed on housing development for for the benefit of affordable housing. So with any new development over a certain size, the town could adopt an inclusionary requirement that would basically be that would basically demand that any new development would include an affordable percentage, whether it's ten percent, fifteen percent, whatever. That's that's a flexible number. Or require a fee, a payment into a housing trust fund that would help the town to set aside and identify affordable units elsewhere in town. So thereby basically taking advantage of the demand at the market for more housing to set aside opportunities or funds for affordable housing. It's not something that costs the town anything. It it basically takes advantage of the private development market. So is this something that you would support the town adopting? Oh.
Yeah, jumping around a little bit.
And again, the 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 enabling legislation in the state statutes is very broad, that the statute doesn't set aside, you know, you must set aside ten percent, you must set aside fifteen percent, or you must pay, you know, fifty thousand dollars a unit. Those numbers are not in statute, they would be locally determined.
Right, seems like we've settled a little bit with just under half in support. So again, if anyone would like to comment or ask questions about this specific strategy, we can have a mini discussion. Any activity in the chat?
So our old friend Carla Ferroni, who used to be on the the Planning Commission, and Carla, it's good to see you. Indicated that she hadn't seen a lot of success with this in the state of Massachusetts, and what's the success of utilization in Connecticut? There's not, there's not a ton of rousing success at this point, and I think in part because it's not widely utilized. To this point, I believe it's really only been been used for any period of time in a couple of communities in Fairfield County. I know Darien has this, New Canaan, and a couple of other communities have put that in place, and they've generally collected a fee in lieu and have built up some housing trust funds. The problem with with that, if the if the fee in lieu is calibrated a little bit too low, you know, in Darien and New Canaan, for instance, housing is extraordinarily expensive to develop. And so even, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in a housing trust fund doesn't necessarily create a ton of units. So I I think the experience here by and large is probably similar, but I think it it may be more that not and not enough towns have tried it, and not enough towns have been aggressive about calibrating those numbers. But I, you know, Liz and Megan, you guys also have experience with this. I don't know if you found something different than that.
I I would say generally that that's what my research in the state has shown as well. Some towns have even opted just to do inclusionary and not have the fee in lieu. That's typically in a larger city or a larger municipality where they say, all right, every new development over ten units has to have ten percent, no ifs, ands, or buts. So that that's a different way to go. It's it's a little more assertive than a carrot and stick approach, let's say. So there there is a lot of flexibility within this, the enabling statute.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, so thank you for your feedback on those things. And that this is certainly, you know, number one, those responses are not, do not constitute a binding referendum. We are not going to make decisions on the basis of that sort of one poll that, you know, somewhere between seven and eleven, if you participated in. But they they do provide us some guidance, and it's an opportunity to begin that conversation. So the next steps from this point forward is that we are going to take a look at those strategies that we discussed tonight, as well as a whole menu of other potential action items and policy directions. We'll be talking about that with Essex's team, which again is headed by Carrie Duquesne, and I will be working with with Carrie and and the local team on that to to narrow down the town's options or, you know, preferred options in updating the 2019 plan. We're going to be doing that basically over the next two months and come up with a draft for public review in the mid-springtime. We are going to, well, there will be another public meeting about that. And we're going to look to finalize the eight thirty J plan and adopt it as part of the overall regional plan by the beginning of June. And so if people are interested in in participating in this process, if people have suggestions or, you know, the the person who put in chat earlier, you know, if you didn't have a chance to really participate in the polls, if you'd like to sound off, you should certainly feel free to reach out to Carrie or to myself. And and we're happy to involve you in that conversation. But speaking of conversation, we're gonna throw it open and see if people do have have comments or questions. Feel free to, at this point, unmute yourself. And we can, we can have a little bit of conversation.
And we do have quite a few things in the chat as well. So I don't know if we want to start there or start with, yeah, all right. So first question was going back to the eight thirty G units and the deed restrictions. A question was whether they get audited from time to time to determine whether they're still.
Well, so they do have to provide an annual report to the town to basically, because they they relied on the state statute and and basically it promised guaranteed that that these units would be available. They do have to provide an annual affordability report. And that would include the, you know, the income, the income verification of the tenants in those units. So the the audit would be sort of pushed down the road. If someone is faking their their tax return, you know, that's that's a sort of a sort of a federal audit sort of situation, but we basically rely on the numbers that are given us to annually by the the landlords or property managers.
And what happens when you exceed eighty percent AMI?
Okay, so, oh, so yeah, so there is a buffer, and I think Carla mentioned that, that there is basically a buffer between eighty and hundred twenty, twenty percent. So you can make a little bit more in any given year. But basically, if you start to to graduate out of that lower income portion, and you are in one of these restricted units, you number one, one, one option would be that you would have to move and and make that unit available. In the case of someplace like Essex Station, where you have a blend of affordable and market rate units, you could basically stay in your unit, and you would just get charged that higher rent because you are no longer sort of in need of the lower rent. And then a different unit in that complex would basically take the place, and it would, the the next tenant coming in to that unit would be only available to to lower income people. But yeah, I mean, if you if you are in low, if you are in low income housing or affordable housing, and you make too much money, you know, it's time to time to move on.
We had a couple of comments and then some other questions that we believe addressed. So if we want to go ahead and open it up to more discussion.
So as you want to, and the screen share, we can get, see people's faces. Well, a few people's faces. So some of the comments, will will there be a public forum about this in town? Because again, you know, during the winter, Essex, like other communities, sort of has a number of people that are that are in warmer places over the winter. We will have another opportunity to comment on this. And again, as always, these things will be available on the town and certainly on the Rivercog website for for review and comment. And Carla's point is there is a great need for single family smaller units. I think that that is the sort of the established character of of Essex that has this established development pattern. One thing that may help that is, again, as I've mentioned a couple of times, we are having a public hearing next month about creation, the as-of-right creation of accessory dwelling units as of right. And those are both attached, so those would both be, you know, you sort of your traditional in-law apartment, you know, in in a back room or above the garage. But also in new freestanding structures that could be a cottage in your backyard or a separate unit in a in a separate building on a single family lot. So that could in many ways, increase the the diversity of an opportunity for smaller detached housing. Basically, as of right, hopefully, if that regulation change passes in April. But that's, that's, you know, a way to sort of densify residential neighborhoods and increase housing opportunities without really dramatically changing the the settlement pattern of our existing properties. And and in fact, you know, the Essex, you know, isn't, isn't a terribly big town, and it's not a terribly populous town, but most of the land that is able to be developed either has been developed or has been preserved by the Essex Land Trust and others. So there there really aren't that many, you know, big swas, twenty, thirty, forty acre pieces around Essex just waiting to be developed. It's, you know, it's it's a, it's a fairly well-built out town, so we'd be looking for these sort of infill and gentle, you know, densification and redevelopment opportunities. I'm sorry, I'm, we can probably see my lips moving, I'm reading the the comments. That means that there may be a time when the percentage of affordability should not meet the required percentage. Yeah, but I think that's that's probably true, but I think most of these, at least in the case of Essex Station, which is the only one that is a mix of of market and affordable housing, are large enough, you know, fifty-two units that you generally have some turnover every year. So there really shouldn't be too many opportunities where where there just aren't the, aren't the the units available there. Although I will say those are hotly in demand. You know, I believe, you know, within a year, year and a half after being constructed, the Essex Station was a hundred percent occupied. And I believe when when Spencer's Corner was being constructed, they had a very long waiting list of people looking to get in there. And yeah, and Carla's Carla's comment about a cooperative approach with a with partnership with a land trust, yeah, I I think creative partnerships and and, you know, not only that things that can achieve multiple aims where we can find more affordable housing, but also maintain and and protect land. And I think this goes back to a comment from Jane Cyrus back earlier in the presentation, that not all land is sort of equally suitable and and not all communities frankly are equally suited to house a great deal of new housing density. In part because of environmental constraints, in part because of infrastructure, in part because a lot of our land is already built upon. But, you know, so that's why it's important to kind of work with other partners and particularly other communities to identify those opportunities and and not let them, not let them get away.
And I will just add on to that. That's part of what we're looking at as part of this regional part of the housing plan. That's why we're kind of taking it as a dual approach of looking at the overall region-wide conditions and trends as well as the individual town. So it's kind of a top-down and bottom-up circular approach to kind of addressing housing needs.
Have we had other other comments or questions that I that I wasn't catching?
We did have three guests from Woodbridge.
Well, welcome. Okay, so again, you know, we don't, I don't want to, we don't want to put people on the spot or make you think of questions that you didn't have already, but again, the 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 information is available on the the Rivercog website, which Megan has put up on the chat a couple of times. And if you do have questions about the process or want to be involved further, please do reach out to Carrie Duquesne, cduquesne@essexct.gov or myself, which is a much longer email, so we'll use Carrie's. And we are, we're very grateful again for Rivercog for providing the opportunity for this plan. And and we we're grateful that you you participated this evening.
And yes, this presentation will be online, as are the presentations for the other eleven towns. This is actually the last town. So all of the other presentations are already on the website, so you can see the two regional presentations and any of the towns' presentations, and anyone can see this presentation as well. So if you're curious and you've got a lot of time on your hands and you feel like checking it all out, it's all there for you. Oh, and also on, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, if it's okay, I'll share the presentation on the town's webpage as well.
Of course, yeah. I will get that sent over to you. And also, if you don't remember the email addresses, there is an info at email address on the project page. So if you just send an email to that, I will make sure that it gets to whoever it needs to go to as well.
Oh, for a little bit of bit of trivia, this, you and I can, or Megan, we can test our memory. The other, the other eleven towns, I can, I'll name mine. So of the eleven, Essex, Clinton, Deep River, Chester, East Hampton, and Lime.
Then I have Killingworth, East Haddam, Portland, Cromwell, Middletown, and Old Line.
I I can tell you the the cog towns that did not participate are Durham, Middlefield, and Old Saybrook, and
Westbrook, and Haddam.
Haddam.
Because those those towns conducted their affordable housing plans separately, basically.
Yeah, they had their own grants and their timeline didn't line up with our grant funding, so. But we will be still looking, you know, in the regional part of the plan, they are still included in that part of the analysis. They're just not doing their individual town plans.
And anyone interested in seeing the Middlefield Affordable Housing Presentation, that's gonna be next Wednesday at the Selectments Meeting.
You haven't had enough?
All right, well, thank you all for your time tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you, Carrie, John, Liz.
Thank you.
Good luck, Liz.
Thanks.